Today's meeting of city council, today's date's Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. Today's invocation will be given by Pastor Brett Holmes, Senior Pastor Calder Baptist Church. And if everyone would please silence your cellphone, and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Thank you, Mayor. If you will join me as we pray together. Creator God, you who charge us to seek the welfare of the city, strengthen us, we pray, to work for the good of our neighbor, the health of institutions that sustain our city, and the vitality of organizations that contribute to the well-being of all people here in this place, so that the life of our community here in Beaumont might become a reflection of your life-giving kingdom and lead to the flourishing of all peoples. Allow those elected officials here today to see their calling to this role as an opportunity to love and serve their neighbors, working for the common good of everyone in this city, such that the differences that so often are used to divide us are instead seen as a gift that enrich our lives and our community. Allow all those present here today, oh Lord, to speak with kindness, grace, and love, to listen with charity and understanding, and to prefer working together over working against. Ensure the safety of all in this community, that all who call Beaumont home will be able to eat, sleep, and find their basic needs met, so that the work we are called to do each and every day as we awake is to enjoy one another and the beauty of your creation. We pray all this in your good and holy name. Amen.
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner.
Present.
Councilmember Duryo.
Present.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Sherwood.
Here.
Thank you.
Today, we have two presentations. First, we'll have the City of Beaumont Communication Update.
In this week's announcements, our new City Bot, we call him Bo, is launching today, and it's another way for you to get information you need about the city of Beaumont even when the city offices are closed. Take a look. Hello, everybody. I'm Tracy Kinnick, the Director of Communications for the City of Beaumont, and I'm excited to introduce you to a brand-new way to connect with the city anytime, anywhere. It's our new City Bot. It's a virtual assistant, and it now lives right here on the City of Beaumont's website. We know that sometimes you have questions outside of business hours, or you just want quick answers without having to make a call, and that's where the City Bot comes in. It's designed to answer your questions 24/7, guide you to the right department, and even translate into 70 different languages, so more members of our community can get the information they need. Let me show you how it works. Right here on our homepage, you'll see this chat icon. Just click it, type in your question, and the chat bot will give you answers. So, for example, if I want to attend a city council meeting, I can go in and ask it, "When is the next city council meeting?" And it will think for a little bit, and then it will come up and show me the date, the time, and the place of the upcoming city council meeting. And then it will ask you, "Is there anything else I can help you with?" It can also give you ideas of different events happening around town, so I can say, "What is happening around town?" And it will give me lots of different options about events and activities, festivals, anything that's happening within the city that's uploaded to our website. It's like having a helpful city staff member right at your fingertips, ready to guide you at any time. The best part is, the City Bot is always improving, so the more you use it, the smarter it becomes. It's here to save you time, make city services more accessible, and give you quick answers whenever you need them, day or night. So, the next time you visit our website, beaumonttexas.gov, give it a try. We're proud to bring this new tool to Beaumont, and we think you'll find it helpful for everything from reporting issues to exploring what's going on in our community. Thank you, and the city looks forward to serving you better. And again, remember, the more you use it, the smarter it gets, so go to beaumonttexas.gov and ask Bo. And a reminder, the city offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 27th and 28th, so our city employees can enjoy the Thanksgiving holiday with their families. We hope everyone has a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Also, we want to remind you, our solid waste department and landfill employees work hard all year long, and they only take a few, a handful of holidays off each year, including Thanksgiving, Christmas Day, and New Year's Day. So, if your regular garbage or heavy waste collection days fall on one of these holidays, your pickup will shift to the Friday of the same week. All other collection days will continue as usual. We appreciate our residents and our hard-working crews who help keep Beaumont clean year-round. Pearl Harbor Day is coming up December 7th. It's one of the few days of the year where the Temple to the Brave is open to the public. The museum at 1350 Pennsylvania Avenue will be open from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., and we'd love for you to stop by. Built in 1932, the temple is dedicated to honoring the men and women who have served our country. Pearl Harbor Day reminds us of the courage shown on December 7th, 1941, and the many sacrifices made by our veterans. So, bring your family and friends, and take a quiet moment to look around and help us honor those who have served our great country. And finally, get into the Christmas spirit at the city's annual Christmas tree lighting. Here's a preview of that for you.
Get into the holiday spirit at the 8th Annual City of Beaumont Christmas Tree Lighting. Join us Wednesday, December 3rd at 5:00 p.m. at the Downtown Event Center Lake for an evening of festive music, dazzling drone shows, delicious food trucks, and holiday fun for the whole family. This free community event is proudly sponsored by HEB. Don't miss the magic. Visit beaumonteventstx.com for all the details.
Maybe the only time you see snow this year in Texas. So, again, that's Wednesday, December 3rd at 5:00 p.m. at the Downtown Event Center Lake, and that's all for this week's announcements.
Thank you. And next, we have presentation of the City of Beaumont Service Awards. And immediately after this, there will be a reception on the first-floor conference room, which is down that hall, for service award recipients and their families.
And that's the Mayor Johnson. Good afternoon, may and council and citizens of Beaumont. This is one of our most pleasurable events we do every year, and that's when we present Services Award. Today, we will recognize people that are above 25 years of service with the City of Beaumont. On tomorrow, we will have a Service Award Breakfast at 7:30 a.m. at the Civic Center, so we invite everyone to join us. But today, we're going to recognize the people with 25, 25 years and above. So, if the Mayor would join me, when I call out your name, come forward, and we'll get a photograph with myself and the mayor. Thank you. First is Michael Croker, Fire Captain, 25 years. And the appropriate Director of the Department. Thank you. Lonny LeBlanc, Crew Leader, Water Utilities, 30 years. We have Mr. Brandon Lee for our Captain, 25 years. Next, 30 years, Michelle Gilbert. And certainly, not least but last, Burt Moore, Police Sergeant, 35 years. And I'm going to ask all the recipients to come up front and get a picture with the entire city council, if you get in front of the dice for a picture.
Okay. Should we squeeze in a little bit more, maybe? I do. Okay. Right here, one, two, three.
And the reception is now going to be happening down the hall in the first-floor conference room for service award recipients and their families and friends. And for those that are here for the presentations and would like to leave, now's the time to do so. At the close of the meeting today, city council will adjourn into executive session to discuss and deliberate economic development negotiations in accordance with Section 551.087 of the Government Code, two-wits specifically, Project Riverfront and the Downtown Hotel Project, and then consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code, Civil Action Number 124CV00085MJT in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Texas, Beaumont Division, Lennon Bass versus Joshua Jackson. And with that, now we're going to move into public comments. If there's, now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda, regular agenda items, 1 through 5, or any other topic. When you walk up to the podium, a green light will come on, and when your three minutes is up, your red light will come on, and you're allowed three minutes to speak. The city clerk will call your name, and if she announces your address, you don't need to repeat it, so.
Good afternoon, City Manager, Mayor, Council, and administrative staff. Stand before you, the first reason is, I know that there's been talk about getting an ordinance for change orders, and I noticed on the agenda online, there were several. I don't see all of them listed here right now, but is there an ordinance that's been devised? Because I know there's been several council members that have asked for that specific item. The other is, we've been so fortunate, the Lord has blessed us that we haven't had any hurricanes, you know, Jamaica got hit real hard. However, I've stood here, I guess, over two years, talking about audible alarm system. And granted, I did get a notice from STAN when there was a hurricane warning. I slept right through it, you know? So, if it had, you know, manifested itself, me and some other people would have been in harm's way. So, I would just appeal to you that if there's something you can do, would you please do it? Because STAN is not enough. If you don't have your cellphone on, or like mobile companies tell me, I need to turn mine off so they can reboot, if that occurrence happens, then you're shot in the foot, or in the knee. I'm wearing a knee brace, so shot in the knee. So, bottom line, if you can, if you will, if you might, thank you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right. If there's no one else here for public comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda? There is a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number one?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one, accept maintenance and authorize final payment to Elite Contractors for the Laura Addition Drainage Improvement Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number one?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number one. Is there any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two?
Council, consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two, accept maintenance and authorize final payment to Vortex Companies for the West Lucas Drive Subservice Valet Repair with Grout Inspection Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number three?
Council, consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two, accept maintenance and authorize final payment to Preferrit Facilities Group for the Danger Street Quiet Zone Median Reconstruction Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Make a motion we approve.
Is there a second? There is a motion and a second for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will carry. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four?
Council, consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number two, accept maintenance and authorize final payment to King Solution Services LLC of Houston for the Street Rehab Phase 5 Sewell Line Replacement Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Move to approve.
There is a motion on item number four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five?
Council, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number nine to the contract with Alco LLC of Beaumont for the 48-inch Pine Street Raw Water Line Project, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Who to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number five, and I see Councilman Turner, then Councilman Hilliard.
Thank you, Mayor. One of my main concerns, Mr. Manager and staff, is when we start getting upwards in these change orders, from what the constituent mentioned earlier, when we're getting past one and two, I understand maybe seeing a few unforeseen things, but we get to eight, nine, I think it's, really should cause more attention to detail in what we're doing. I know this is a large-scale project, and I know this was said last time that we did get a change order, but now we're here again with another one, so I can, we can explain what's going on.
Yeah, I can get Molly to go into details, but I would like to commend staff, because if you look at these change orders, they're less than the contracted amount, it's less than the amount that the city originally made the contract for. And in most cases, it's less than the estimated amounts we have for them. So, I really commend staff for the work that they do in looking at these projects and managing them as we go through the process to do that. So, all of these today, the ones I've had the chance to review, actually came in less than we estimated and less than the initial contract amount, so I yield to Molly.
Thank you for saying that, because our staff has worked very hard on these projects to make sure that this is as accurate as possible. And during the course of construction, as listed in here, I just want to point out, change orders 1 through 8 do accumulate to a deduction of $8.2 million to the total contract price. This is easily the most complicated project that we have underway at this time, over two and a half miles of Pine Street and some of the oldest infrastructure that we have in the city, and kind of like when you decide to remodel a hundred and something-year-old house, you get into the walls and you find out that things are not what you expected, and that's what has happened here. So, this change order is going to remove concrete roadway base, which was not accounted for in the original design plans. And so, there was, during the course of the preparation of this change order, this also does include $172,000 credit. So, we are always looking for the opportunities to save, as well, you know, when we do realize that there is additional work that must be done. We don't bring these change orders to you lightly. There is a lot of discussion, there's a lot of pushback. Like I've mentioned in the past, we come from really a position of note when the work is changing, and they have to, the engineer of record and the contractor must present to us the justification for the additional work before we will ever consider presenting it to council for consideration.
Yes, Councilman Turner?
And just to follow up, I just want to make it clear and understood, it's not a tactic, staff, but when our constituents contact us and they see some of these numbers raising, it's our job to speak on our constituents' behalf and ask these questions. So, I want to make sure I put that out there, because we just had a constituent come to the mic about the change order, so, you know, it's my job as their elected official to speak on it.
Right, and we do try to anticipate the issues as they come along, but we can only close so much of Pine Street at a time, and we can only open up so much of Pine Street at a time to see what is happening in that ground. And so, this, this construction project has been underway for over 18 months, and so, we are continuing to find challenges, we continue to push the contractor to look ahead so that we don't have any surprises, and we do the best that we can.
All right, and the only thing I'd like to add before we have a vote on this is the unintended consequences of passing ordinances. When we start addressing change orders, there is nobody on this council, I don't believe right now, that has any experience putting in 48-inch raw water lines, and we do have a engineering department that reviews that, and they are our staff. And when they're bidding these jobs, as we can see here, we saved $8.2 million, and if we limited the number of change orders, it could affect what we could recover, and it can affect what we're charged, but more times than not, it affects what we, reducing bills. And when we do run into these unexpected challenges in a city with an infrastructure that goes back to the 1800s, and just on, since I've been on council, I know there's been repairs to a water outflow line that was put in in 1890, so they're going to run into surprises at that time, so I just wanted to add that. But if the Councilman, Duryo?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, two of these first four that we did, those are all finishing projects, right? They're complete.
Yes, sir, these were project closeout change orders.
And they came in less money. I just want to hope that sitting out there, just because it says change order, that doesn't mean that they're charging us more. A lot of these, we ended up paying less, but you had to do a change order for that. So, I just wanted to let them know that.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other discussion at this point, all those in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you take us into the reading of item number six?
Council, to consider an ordinance providing for the reimbursement of capital expenditures incurred prior to the closing of financing, and it comes to a recommendation of approval of the ordinance.
All right, is there a motion for item number six?
Who to approve?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of order, of regular item number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the first work session? Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the first work session?
Council to review and discuss low income housing tax credit. Justice coming to do that.
Good afternoon. So the purpose of the work session today is just to give you guys a brief overview on our housing tax credits. This is not something that the city issues, but we do have applicants each year that are applying to the state, and so they need the council's support in order to do that. I want to just give you a brief overview. We're going to be talking about what housing tax credits are. For those of you that are new to council, we're going to discuss the upcoming deadlines and the timeline that's annual for this program with the state. I'm going to talk about our existing process and the existing scoring matrix that is in place that we adopted last year. And then I'm going to give you an example of the highest scoring project from last year and what progress they have made to date. And then we're going to hopefully get your feedback on what this council's preferences for the scoring in the upcoming program year. So really quickly, for those of you that may not be aware how tax credits work, I did give you this handout just for your overview, but tax credits are something that the government allocates annually to the states. They come from the federal level, and they are claimed by any recipient over a ten-year period. So when you have a developer that applies to the state for these tax credits, and if they are awarded, it's because they're being based on a specific guideline that the state creates. And we have, it's a very competitive process, and they're allocated regionally. So in our state and in our region, for example, a developer that wants to do a project in Beaumont may be competing against a developer that wants to do a, a project in Orange. You're very limited as to how many projects per region. And really, the way that the tax credits work, you can think of them as a financing mechanism. So the credits are sold to investors, and then those investors turn around and receive the tax benefit. And that helps to reduce their construction costs overall. The main point of this is affordability because in exchange for the tax credits, they're setting aside a percentage of the units at these multifamily developments for households that, that have low income residents. So there are two types of credits. There's a nine percent and a four percent. And typically, when we see an application and they're coming to council for support with the resolution, it is the nine percent project. There are several key benefits to having these projects in our community. One of them is that it increases our housing supply. I'm not going to read all of that to you, but you've got it there in front of you. The second benefit is the lower rents. And the third is private investment. So it's leveraging private capital to address a public need in our community, and that's good for us because it's reducing the reliance on direct government funding and spending for housing development, which, as you know, we receive a very small percentage of. So lastly, before we get into the slideshow of what it looks like now, I just want to explain why these developers have the mandate to get support from council on any application. The city of Beaumont has more than twice the state average per capita of these affordable housing projects. And because of that, in order for them to be allowed to apply to the state, they have to include a resolution of support from council in their application. There's one update to this program. When legislation was passed in July of twenty twenty-five this year, that with the big beautiful bill, implemented a permanent twelve percent increase annually for these projects. And so for the nine percent housing tax credit, which we see most often, there's going to be an annual permanent increase of twelve percent. And that begins in twenty twenty-six. So we do anticipate that we will receive applications this year from local developers. And I'll go ahead and show you, as you can see on the slide, it states that our deadline is December first. That's an internal date for council, and the reason for that is because these projects are due to the state in March. And so we need to get them back to you for any sort of a resolution of approval in February. So their deadline to apply to us and let us know about what potential project they may be considering is December one. And so we have just a few acronyms. The T D H C A, Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, they are the state H C that's overseeing this program and that's handling the scoring. And then L I T E C, Low Income Housing Tax Credits. And so you've got most of the verbiage of this on your printout, but it explains the purpose of these credits. So last year, we brought to council a new scoring system. Like I mentioned, the city has an excess of these multifamily developments, and so the prior council expressed an interest in incentivizing these developers to do less multifamily and more cottage style or detached design. That was not mandated, but it was expressed as an interest, and so we implemented that last year. Some of the design priorities that we used to score these applications are proximity to grocery, walkability, again, the detached single family design, and access to parks and public transit. Now, those items that I've just mentioned and that you'll see on the next slide in our matrix were each allotted a certain percentage of points. But in addition to those points, if the design were detached and if the location was considered attractive, and if they include market unit rents and not just low income units, then there were additional points allowed. There was also the possibility of cash in lieu of park improvements. And please do note that the council has the option not to support any applications in a given year, if that is your decision. But again, they cannot apply without the council's support in a resolution. So this is what our current scoring matrix looks like. Again, we implemented this last year. On the far left, you can see the amenities, again, the full-scale grocery, access to transit, hospitals or urgent care, licensed daycare, community senior centers, green space, and schools. And so you're looking at the site that they are proposing and the distance it is from any of those amenities. And so they score more points the closer those amenities are to their proposed site. And then with the market rate units, if you look for the mixed income project table, they can receive points on the number of units that they're allocating. And so that's what our current application or slideshow on the website is, in a nutshell, that's it. This is an example of last year's scorist, I'm sorry, highest scoring project. It's called Riva Ridge. It's located next to Target Shopping Center on Concord. And, and that's their site plan. They scored a twenty-seven, given their proximity to all of those new items that we implemented in our scoring matrix. And they did, of course, have very high support from the local neighborhood associations there. But they're doing sixty-three units in that location. And so what we want to determine from you today is whether or not you want to maintain this existing scoring system. And I also want to convey that while we did implement a preference for cottage style units last year, the feedback that we received from developers was that it doesn't pencil for their developments. It's not economically feasible for them to do developments like that with the funding that they're receiving in the, in the way of the tax credits. And so we need to consider whether we want to continue to encourage that, or knowing that it isn't financially feasible, remove that from our scoring matrix.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Was there a reason that we went with a cottage style development? What was the reasoning behind that?
The prior council just prioritized that type of development. They felt that we had an abundance of multifamily and that we did not have any developments aside from the old cottages next to Walmart on Old Dowlin. That's the, the lone development that has the cottage style detached unit. So their feeling was just that they wanted to incentivize more of that type. I will say that Riva Ridge, this, this latest award, they were successful. They have recently pulled permits, and they did pay fifty thousand to the parks for that, for that development. They're breaking ground soon, and they do plan to apply for this next funding cycle. They haven't identified the site here, but they do plan to apply. And they also applied the prior year. You may have seen it. It's in Councilman Duryo's ward, and it's on Eleventh Street. And, and that, that's almost completed, actually, but, yes.
Yes, Councilman Turner?
Yeah, just at this time, it's probably good for us to kind of get some feedback on what direction we want to go in. In the past, the previous council, we want to kind of strategically say where we wanted these developments to go versus them all piling up on major drives. So we try to balance them out throughout the communities. So that's why we kind of got to this point, to where, how we want to do it. Most people come because if it changes to them to do it. And a lot of these neighborhoods, you know, one of my biggest concerns is what happens to the older apartment complexes when people move out of them and transition, and they can sometimes be left to be eyesore in various parts of the community. So at this time, it's kind of good for us to chime in. The reason we said more cottage style is because it took more away from apartment feel and more single living. So now that we're a new council, I think it's important to kind of let you guys know to chime in and get some feedback on what direction y'all think we should go into the city, because this is a new council.
Councilman Williams, thank you.
You said that we had twice the state average. How many of these type units do we have?
I couldn't say.
Or do you know how it compares to, you know, other, I mean, if we're talking apartments, how many?
So in the last five years, I believe we've had four developed. But I, I, prior to me, I think that that was the statistic.
Yeah, I'm not sure that we can get the exact number of units, but the number of complexes is probably twelve to fifteen. So, I mean, if we're twice the state average, and, I mean, you said that we have an excessive amount of these type, how is it still feasible? I mean, what makes this?
Because we still have a great need for affordable housing here, and our demographics are aging. So the need is not going away, but, but we do have more than double the state average.
Yes, Councilwoman Sherwood?
I think for me, because our demographic is aging in this cottage style, I don't know if this is upstairs, downstairs, but it's a flat level.
Single story.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I was wondering, because I don't want elderly people going up and down, so that matters.
Thank you. Councilman Crenshaw?
One of the complaints that I get from these senior affordable housing facilities that are the, the multifamily and the multi-level is the elevators. I mean, maybe three calls this week about elevators. The good news is apparently rain contributes to the elevator problems, and we haven't had a lot of rain lately. But I, I also get a lot of feedback from people that are anti the constant expansion of apartments in Beaumont, and especially with our infrastructure being aged, you know, it, it strains that. So I've, you know, there's a lot of things that prior council did that I, I haven't understood, but I think the cottage is a positive thing, and I think that that's probably the way that I'd want to go.
Councilman Hilliard, thank you. Councilman Crenshaw?
Thank you, Mayor. I would, I would voice the same thing. I mean, I, I don't believe that we should stack them on top of each other. I think that this gives them a sense of home, a place to come home to, and with our aging community, wheelchairs and things like that. I, I will go with Councilman Crenshaw and, and say that I think the cottage style development, it feels more like a home than being warehoused in a big apartment complex.
Thank you. Councilman Duryo?
You said that, that the cottage style home, the developers were saying that they couldn't afford to do it?
Correct.
But it still, it doesn't change the competitiveness of the scoring because everybody's held to the same scoring, whether they're doing the cottage or the apartments.
That's right. Well, this proximity to amenity is the main scoring. And then they get additional, potentially twenty points additional, depending on the income mix of the units. And so the cottage style is, is in addition to those points. Now, last year, one of the applicants that, that was successful initially did say that they would be doing eight units of the cottage style on-site with the remaining buildings being multifamily. When they took that to, to the bank, they essentially determined that they couldn't deliver that. So they ended up only doing the multifamily on that site. Uh, no, Riva Ridge next to Concord. So even if they aspire to, to deliver those sort of units, if they can't afford to do it, then they won't.
That was my question.
Councilwoman Sherwood, and then Councilman Turner?
So that was my question. If they say that they're going to, we give them this extra points to do the cottage style, and then they go and they don't have the ability to do the cottage style, is there any pushback from us that they did not deliver on the cottage style, and now we're?
Not at this time. There could be, but at that point, they've already applied to the state. They've had the council's support, and they've been awarded the credits. And so there's really nothing for us to take away.
I got you. That's my question. So we can't enforce this cottage style. It's just, in theory, we like it. We would like to see that happen.
So council previously did put in their, their support resolution that they would do it, and I think it was, it was Riva Ridge, that they would lend all of their, their support instead of dividing their support between applicants. But they would give all of their support to one particular applicant if they made a donation to parks. And so council could, in their support resolution, add language that says that if they are unable to deliver the allotted cottage style units, that an additional dollar amount be contributed to parks to potentially, and be prepared and budget for the additional monies. But you at least get money.
Yeah, and in terms of the state application itself, there is no incentive for them to do that development. They don't, they're not scored on that.
Councilman Duryo, then Councilman Turner?
So if they're unable to do the cottage style, that does not disqualify them for applying for these tax credits?
No.
That's just a.
It's just a city preference, potentially.
But they can still be graded. They just won't have that grade for the cottage style?
Correct. And at the end of the process, after they've submitted their applications in December, staff has scored them and then presented them to council, potentially in February. If you see that they aren't suggesting cottage style and you determine not to support their application, then they can't apply.
Well, we, in doing this process, there's other things that we can require of them for this tax credit. Also, if I'm not mistaken, we did once, well, we approved two applicants, but we only gave one of them the tax credits.
Well, we don't award the tax credits, but I, but I believe what we did,
Only made one suggestion.
What we did was waive the five hundred dollar fees for one and not the other. But we, in terms of the tax credits, we don't really have any, any piece in that process.
Councilman Turner?
Yes, that's what I wanted to bring up earlier. That's why I say this. That's why I say this, I had the opportunity to give feedback into what we want to get in return for these projects. And the parks donation, one of the first times we ever did that on the last time as a council. So this is an opportunity to kind of get some feedback. Another thing, when you look at the housing market, the people that are on the waiting list, can you kind of speak to what our housing market is looking like right now? People who on waitlist for affordable?
In terms of the waiting list, are you referring to the Beaumont Housing Authority's waitlist? So they have two lists. One is in excess of four thousand families, the other is over five thousand families. They only open their portal for vouchers annually and they've had a list around those totals for many years. They only receive, I believe, eighteen hundred vouchers.
Go ahead, Mayor. I have one more, uh, I have more, one more follow-up. And also, when you say these compete in other areas, I'm familiar with it, but for people watching, I need you to explain it, because we're talking Orange, we're talking Port Arthur, and it's only one that gets the contract to, or not contract, but they're able to move forward.
It's a regional allocation. And so last year, for example, River Ridge's developer was in competition with another developer in Orange. We also had a second applicant here, which was ITEX, and they've done multiple properties in the past. And, and they actually ended up coming back with a four percent application later for a rehab, but they pulled their nine percent, because at the state level, when they're competing, there are tiers in their scoring. And if they see that it's, you know, coming down to one or two properties more so, then sometimes a developer in the region will just pull their application and it sort of pushes support toward another. So we only had one win in our region last year for the Beaumont River Ridge.
Man, lastly, just an appetite for location. Like, the last thing you want to do is have staff going through the weeds of doing the work and council already have their mind made up that we don't want certain things in certain locations. So it's important to communicate with staff upfront.
And, and that's another important piece of implementing the scoring system, because prior to this, we didn't have any perimeter set, we didn't have any preferences for the proximity to transit or, or grocery or childcare. And so that certainly helped us in, you know, weighing each of the applications. And we don't recommend getting rid of the scoring in any capacity, but if you would like to see additional amenities included, we'd, we'd certainly like feedback on that.
Yes, yes, Councilman Williams. The waitlist that has the four or five thousand people, are those all current Beaumont residents? Or?
No, so vouchers travel with the person.
But there's not four thousand families in Beaumont on that?
There are on Beaumont Housing Authority's waitlist. I can't speak to their current residency, but they're, the voucher travels. And so there, the other type of assistance is specific to the unit. In this case, for these developments, if you have a mixed unit, mixed income, you may designate thirty percent of the units, for example, at River Ridge for the low income. That means that those units themselves are designated and not, not the, the family living there. So they may not have a voucher, but the rent will be locked in at that thirty percent.
Councilman Durio?
On this sheet, and you may, I may have missed it, but you said that legislation passed in 2025, this says there'll be a permanent twelve percent increase to the annual allocation of nine percent. So is that an additional twelve percent?
No, so the legislation passed in July, but it won't go into effect until 2026. And what it's doing is increasing the nine percent tax credit by twelve percent. So it's, it's adding money to that program, a permanent increase.
So it's going to be twenty-one percent?
The nine percent is a program and they're adding more funding to the nine percent program.
It's a twelve percent increase in money or tax credits going to that.
It'll be the same amount, there's just more money being put into it by the federal government. So it'll be able to fund more.
In other words, the federal government is increasing their support for this program and they're doing it permanently.
Okay.
So we should not see a reduction in requests. That's why I brought that up.
All right, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So do we want to keep the scoring system?
I would think, does anybody have any comments about not keeping that current scoring system?
I support it.
I do too.
All right, thank you for the feedback.
All right, thank you. Mr. City Manager, would you take us into the next work session?
Counsel? Counsel to review and discuss the water customer service audit. Ms. Reed?
So in September of this year, my office conducted a water customer service audit and the purpose was to essentially review their operational procedures. And this came essentially at the request, it's almost like volunt, told, but at the request of, of some concerns by council. The audit lasted about a couple of weeks, several weeks, actually. We interviewed employees past and current. We talked to assisting departments, namely water utilities, HR and IT. And we also just did some simple observations. Next slide. So the objective of the audit was simple. We wanted to evaluate the operational procedures of water customer service division with the primary goal of finding avenues to improve efficiency and better service to citizens. Next slide. We tailored our focus on three areas, governance and internal controls, staffing and training and the use of technology. Next slide. So for governance and internal controls, we discovered that the division was very limited in their SOGs, which are standard operating procedures. The current written policies that they have on file were leak adjustments, absenteeism and tardy. The leak adjustment policy was not something that had been formally adopted by council. It was just an internal policy that they used. They had some kind of this is how we do business type things. They were just kind of informal practices that have just been long-term and longstanding, but they didn't have any general policies regarding regular daily operations. Some of their practices, we noticed did not align with city ordinances, specifically those that dealt with collecting the, collecting deposits as well as giving notice to customers who were facing disconnection on their right to have a hearing. Post-audit, my office did receive draft SOPs last Friday. We've already started reviewing them and are looking to provide feedback to that division later in the week. Some of those policies include a body cam policy, payment plans, leak adjustments, cross-training, billing, car retention and customer service, which was some of the key areas that we identified. Next slide. Sapping and training, we divided into three areas, vacancies, training and then field operations. So there were several vacancies in water customer service, specifically in the meter shops that are impacting field operations. We also noticed that some of the employees, although they were trained very well in their specific roles, they did not have any cross-training across the board. Having limited cross-training ability in your division limits operations in the fact that if that one person who does that one job is out, it gets backed up and doesn't happen. You also have the theory, what happens if so-and-so gets hit by a bus, right? So limited cross-training definitely impacted their operational efficiencies. And so we recommended that. As well, as, as it relates to field operations, there were numerous vacancies in the meter shop. Those are the guys who basically read and repair meters. And those, the necessity to get those repaired so that we can have accurately determined water bills have been shifted to water utilities, which in most cases required that director to reallocate resources unplanned or pull crews from other jobs to kind of assist in that department. Post-audit, we did move all field operation employees to water utilities. This will allow for quicker response time and better planning. Now those crews are specifically assigned to meter repairs and meter reading operations. So they're no longer being pulled from primary water utilities jobs. They are specifically assigned for that. Next slide. So there's no really like nice way to say it, but the technology in this area is severely outdated. So the current financial software we've had, it's been in place for almost thirty years. The water customer service version is roughly twenty years old. I think today I was talking to one of our IT specialists and she said, we've had it since like nineteen ninety-four and it hit me in the gut, because I was like in the fourth grade. So just to kind of put that in context for you, in the fourth grade, we didn't have iPads, iPods. We haven't any like seriously good, cool Apple products. So that's how old our, our water customer service is. The current vendor has provided enhancements, I'm sorry, have not provided any software enhancement. They've only done software updates in the form of, to correct bugs. So there's not really been any major updates to our current software. To replace our financial software completely, and we're talking financial software that's anyone who uses and collects it, so that be purchasing, collections, any of our financial departments will be one point eight million dollars and that's just for the implementation. The annual budget expense would obviously be a lot lower. To only do water customer service would be eight hundred thousand dollars. And speaking with IT and some of other, other cities, they don't recommend using multi, different multi-financial software, it's just because it can cause some errors and some, some complications down the line. We also noticed that the, the software that we do have was underutilized in the sense that the software currently allows for the user to input notes about the account. And we all noticed that there were a lot of use of paper notes, like sticky notes and those type of things, which often led to errors and confusion, because there were no notations in the file. You actually have to track down the sticky note, find out who wrote the sticky note. Just kind of date it, like nineteen ninety-four dated. So that was, that was a problem. So for example, if a customer was on a payment plan, sometimes that information wasn't notated in the notes. If that person had called about a particular issue, sometimes that was not notated in the, in the customer service file. So those type of things led to errors. And again, you would have to either rely on that person getting the same customer service rep or someone having historical knowledge of that particular case and for them to apply that to that citizen. So the inconsistent use of technology kind of comes in with our body cameras. We have body camera for our field employees. That's mostly for their protection. We want them to record their actions out in the field. There are tons of times when there's interactions with the citizens and if their body cams are on, we can audit that very quickly to determine what's happened, to resolve that issue quickly. But this also just relates back to inconsistent or the lack of SOPs not having a consistent policy and how that's used. Next slide. So most, if not all of these things are already in progress. Like I said, we've already started developing SOPs in working with HR to establish a cross-training policy. There is a SOP for that as well. Like I said, most of the meter readers or the field operations have been transferred under water utilities and they're making the necessary adjustment in their crews and in their work schedule to accommodate those needs. And the manager has indicated that increased or improved technology will be a, a top budget priority for FY27. But we are looking at what we can do to maximize the use of our existing technology in that area, which includes just using more notes in the field. So this concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions about the audit. I will add that we also looked at the average wait time for a customer, which is about, we looked from August first to September twenty-ninth, but there's about one month prior to the audit beginning and then the month of the audit. And the average wait time before a call was answered was about one minute and fifty-one seconds. That data did not determine how long a customer was on the phone or if the customer had to be put back on hold for their issue to be resolved. So we weren't able to collect data to determine how long a person actually had to talk to someone before their issue was resolved. But we did want to point that out. But this could, stuff like that could also be included in, in call notes, customer call regarding this issue, which again relates to the underutilization of technology. And we do have the assistant departments here to answer any of those questions you may have about your operation, but I'm happy to answer as many as I can about the audit.
And just as a point of reference, before we start talking about this, I, I'll say I've only been on council two and a half years and every year this has come up as a problem, but when it comes to funding these problems, the antiquated software, for instance, I think we need as a council to have a priority that it, I'm all for fixing all of our service departments, but we're going to have to invest in them. When we're using that old of technology, I know my business and per, and my personal technology, I, you know, I invest in every year. And I think it's going to be important if we're going to be able to get better results and we will certainly be able to get a lot better measurement from that. But yes, Councilwoman.
One of my big questions were, is within, in the same vein of updated technology, information, whatever, do we need updated meters or new meters? Is that something that we need to look into as a council investing in not just technology, but the actual meter?
So I think we did do an overhaul meter a couple of years ago, right? I'm going to bring Mike up, because this, this is his area. But we did invest in like some new meter reader technology. And we do contract with a company to help repair those meters. The problem is that that contract typically expires quickly, because they're, like meters are one of those things that we have to repair and replace quite often there in the ground, so people can damage them just by cutting the grass or other things. But I'm going to let...
Yeah, so to answer your question, Councilwoman, we have in probably about the last two years, three years, gone to a more technology-friendly meter. We're moving away from the brass mechanical meters that, you know, you typically see. We're going to what they call ultrasonic meter, which is actually all digital and it reads the water through ultrasonic. There's no moving parts on the inside of it. So like I said, we've had in the last about two or three years, actually tried to replace the meters, what we're going with, with, with new meters.
Question, how many meters have we replaced and how much meters do we have to replace still?
I'd have to get back with you on that for an exact number, but we, we probably replace somewhere fifty to eighty a month.
So we don't replace a meter, like if it's an existing brass meter, we don't replace it until it's like end of life. So if it breaks and we have to go out, so we're not just repeatedly going out, going into someone's neighborhood digging it up. Any new development is designed, implemented with the new meters. So any new development you'll see will have the newer meters and the newer areas. So any, anything built within the last two, three years will have the new meters. Anything coming online, but also any repaired meters are replaced with the new meters.
Okay, perfect.
And, and also a lot of times, if there's a meter issue, the meter may be fine, it may be just a broke register, you know, where the glass broke on top, which is an easy fix, where they just unsnap the register and put a new register in. So, you know, if there's a meter issue, it does not necessarily warrant replacing the whole entire meter.
Yeah, so we're looking at, because it's expensive, but we're looking at replacing, like if there's a major repair to a meter, we're going to just pull it and replace it. But if it's not mechanical, it'll remain intact. So replacing the glass on the meter wouldn't constitute a meter replacement.
Okay, I have a few more questions. So we noticed that we had errors, but do we roughly have any estimate on how many errors that we have or have had, one? And two, are we doing anything retroactively in the way of correcting some of these errors? I had a constituent recently tell me that he had leak adjustments that had been denied for several properties and it couldn't be verified and it turned into all this kind of disaster. But my question is, when we find out or we lose these papers or we don't have the notes or the sticky note get lost and all of that, do we go back and correct these things for our people or we just, because this person feels like they kind of just got lost in the sauce. But how do we update how many errors we have and are we correcting them? And will we into the future, go back and retroactively correct some errors?
So for legal reasons, I'll prefer to answer that offline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Hilliard, did you have your hand up?
I did, I did. That, that, the meter thing is a, is a kind of a big deal. In fact, most of the complaints that I've fielded is because they went out and the meter was broken. People had seven, eight hundred dollar water bills and, and it took an intervention by me to, to get that water bill. So it's good to know, but I, I know there's a lot of them that are broken and a lot of people don't know it and they just continue to pay. So I, I need to ask, you said that the IT department does not recommend us upgrading?
No, they do not recommend doing a partial upgrade. So if the council was to say that they wanted to upgrade the system, the recommendation would be to upgrade the entire financial system.
And that's the million?
One point eight.
Okay, and that would do the whole system?
Yes.
Now, are we paying for, are we paying to use this outdated? Now, are we paying for, are we paying to use this outdated system or do we own it outright?
You pay for, that, that, we don't own the software, so we do have an annual cost that the city pays.
But it comes with no updates?
That's correct.
And, uh, did we see, what's the working environment like inside the, the, um, department?
I'd love to answer that offline for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Durya?
Uh, that one point eight million was, is that addressed in the current budget?
No.
What about, um, what's the cost of a meter?
Roughly our cost on a five eighths meter is about a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Oh, really? Okay. Also, are we doing anything to address the staffing vacancies?
So, yes, like I said, we, we moved, uh, the field oper- operations under Mike, um, sorry, Director Harris. For, they're now underwater utilities. He has, uh, the ability to basically use the crews more efficiently so he can move them around. So like I said, previously he was using his water, uh, utility crews to do repair works and also supplement the work orders for, uh, water customer service. Now he's able to divide those crews, um, and divide their work evenly using, supplementing the crews with the previous, uh, or the previous water customer service employees. Um, there are some other vacancies for, um, water customer service, uh, agents. Those are posted in HR, um, and so they're, they're on the website and available.
Okay, also going back to that, uh, Dr. Mayor said, we have to invest in this, in this system and that one point eight million is an investment. Is there room for us to, to make that investment and, and get this done?
Well, I'll, I'll talk to that. That's, uh, it needs to be done and, and it should be done. That, that's the majority of the problems derived from the antiquated software system. Um, a system you operate on since ninety-four is unheard of. You know, that's back when HTE or some software systems like that, which companies are no, are long in business and this might be an HTE system. Uh, and my recommendation for budgeting this year is going to be the number one priority. Uh, replacing this software, not just the software for the water department, the financial software system, which is the one point million, is the number one priority for this budget. And it could, it's more doable now because it can be paid for out of your water, utility fund, your water revenue fund. It doesn't come from your own fund. And we built that fund up over the years, you know? We had the question like, why do we have five million dollars sitting in there now? Uh, so now we, we have the money to be able to take that on. And I will highly recommend to this council that that, and it will be included in that budget proposal, that this be done. Otherwise you're going to operate inefficiently as a city. Not this, it's not just water, it impacts HR, uh, finance and other departments too. Cause they all interface with the software and they'll talk to each other through the software. So it's, it's imperative that we do that.
When you say this budget, you're talking about the current budget that we're in?
No.
FY, FY twenty-seven.
Seven.
There's, Councilman Turner?
Yes, I had a few questions that constituents have talked to me about and asked me to inquire. Have we ever looked into either other cities, do people who own multiple properties? Are they having, uh, every time they get a new tenant or they do another project, can they do it all under one name or they have to do it all individually?
So the way the ordinance is written, it's per property, not by property owner. So that, that, that address has an outstanding balance. Uh, council can consider like rewarding their ordinance if they wanted to, um, but it's, it's by the address. Now there are some things that are tied to the name, but they're, when you go in, you kind of show like, hey, this particular property had, has a balance due, but I wasn't a tenant at that property and I, I want to, you know, start services. But, um, there isn't anything in the, in the current ordinance that allows for them, one person to have multiple accounts under their name. That person, you know, obviously would have, would receive multiple bills per the address.
Mr. Manager, in your experience, have you seen in other cities that you worked on, what you travel to and looked at? Do, do, is it familiar or common for one property owner to owns multiple properties to have it listed that way or no?
Uh, have it listed all under their name, a property's name. Yeah, it typically goes into private because people are mobile, people are really mobile and they move around in some cities. So otherwise you'd have no way of tracking, uh, those people and they even move to other cities. And I've been in cities where we had, we had agreements with that city that if that same person moves to your city and they owe us a bill, you don't, you're not going to turn their water on before that because people will do that. Uh, so it sounds like say if somebody moved to Port Arthur and they owed us a bill, they would reciprocate us if they moved from Port Arthur to Beaumont, et cetera. So we, yeah, uh, there, there is a lot of, uh, issues, variables that are tied to that. Sometimes you have to adapt this as a region or city to cover.
Yeah, when it comes back to us, if we can kind of get a analysis of options if other people are doing it, I would appreciate it. The second thing is the amount of water loss has increased in the last couple of years. Um, if we cut back on chemical usage and possible mechanical equipment usage with the maintenance, can it possibly save money since we've been losing with water usage?
The less water used, the less chemical used, which, and which creates more costs. You know, the more chlorine you have to put into the water, the more water you pump. So it's advantageous for us to lower water loss. Uh, and it's, it's kind of less critical in the area that's not drought prone to drought like we are here. We get high rain, so you, people tend not to think about it as much, but we're, water's scarce as you really tighten down. But, uh, we have requirements by TCEQ, uh, as far as water laws and we have to report to them yearly, you know, amount of water loss.
Yeah, the constituent that asked, that's what he, that he sent me the data showing prior to the meeting, how much water we've lost over the last few years from the report. And maybe the new equipment and the data can actually help what, what, uh, us capture some of that. And my last question was, does the software provide, that we're currently using, provide real-time data, uh, like?
No.
No?
No.
Oh, wow.
Now, before I got here, but I think part of our system is the ITRON system, which is an automated meter reading system. But there are a lot of things that come with those packages and I'm sure the city of Beaumont purchased all those other things. Like, I could sit at home and watch my media and tell if it's leaking, if it's running, whatever, if I'm sitting right here. I've been in places like that and I'm not sure some of those components of that, which were available in those packages, if they were purchased or not.
And my last thing is two things, uh, Councilwoman Sherwood mentioned earlier, when people have the adjustment form. Uh, we get a lot of people that, uh, end up paying a bill that costs an excessive amount of money and we go back and research it and if it was wrong on our end, we would give them a credit. And we've been getting a lot of pushback and issues with that because a lot of people want it's their money and they paid it and something went wrong on our end, they want their money back. So, you know, another thing is the, the hearings, like, you know, just the transparency and how people can come to address these things when it happens. Because the last thing we want is citizens feeling like they're unheard or they don't have an opportunity to express what they experienced and went through. Also those meters on top of the, in, in the front lawn, the little black square.
ITRON meters.
Yeah, a, a lot of people get those damaged, specifically our seniors, you know? They pay people to cut their grass and the staff has done a better job, in my opinion, uh, working with people who have damaged them, maybe the first time. I'm thinking they'll waive the fee, but the tough part is when we're looking at our seniors, they get these people to come in and cut their grass and it can consistently keep happening and I can see it being a, a thing. So if we can kind of look into if that's efficient or not.
That's an ordinance that council adopted. Um, I can, give me a second, I'll pull it up for you. Um, but most of what you're speaking on has to do with, uh, SO, SOPs. And so we are reviewing those, uh, the legal adjustment policy being one of them. Um, and we can add in that, but that is an ordinance, uh, that council adopted that deals with tampering or damaging the water meter. Um, so not enforcing those provisions would be a violation of your ordinance.
Well, I think we need to revisit it if council's open to.
I second it.
All right, any, Councilman Crenshaw?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that the, um, the reason why this most recent audit happened was a complaint that, uh, was initiated, um, by me, uh, from a constituent, an elderly couple who had their water disconnected by mistake. And, um, I, I, I'm not trying to say that the audit didn't answer questions, but I guess I'm still trying to figure out what happened that the water could be turned off by the city's mistake and what has changed to be sure that that doesn't happen in the future. Because I get water's going to be turned off because people don't pay their bills or, or whatever other reason. But the idea that the city is turning water off by mistake when people are paying their bills and there isn't an explanation as to what happened and corrective action taken to ensure that it doesn't happen in the future, to me is, is, is problematic. So I get, uh, that our software is bad and we need new software. But at the end of the day, some human looked at that account and made a decision to disconnect the water. And what I would like to see is a new SOP or whatever it is that is put into place that ensures that that type of stuff doesn't happen in the future. I would hope that the city disconnects water as a last resort, not, we're disconnecting all these water accounts today and, you know, moving on with our next project. So I would hope that before someone's name is put on the list to be disconnected, that it be at least checked by two different people. So the, the person initiating the disconnect and then maybe a supervisor has to sign off on it to ensure that all of our disconnects are done correctly and not by, uh, mistakes. So I just add that, I'm not necessarily looking for a response from staff there because I'm sure staff doesn't want to say.
No, I can answer it.
Oh, okay, great.
So, uh, there's, the process for disconnection was reviewed. Um, and what we determined is that the use of credit card payments when it's received versus when the bill was due, there was not a, a calculation or consideration that someone could pay their credit card, um, their bill online with a credit card, um, the day after or on the weekend and that that would be timely applied to when the quote unquote bill would become late. So there's some, some definite, some things in place. One, um, the implementation of the new grace period by council. Um, two, um, a, a, a policy for payments, um, implementing when the last day to pay by credit card would be, um, to be received timely, um, but also calculating in time with the grace period as well as a policy regarding, um, cash payments, check payments, um, and when those are applied evenly. Uh, the other part is, is that paper notes, as I mentioned in my presentation, was a contributing factor for, uh, improper disconnections. Um, so, uh, encouraging staff and requiring staff through operating procedures and guidelines to input notes. Input notes when a person is, um, having their account adjusted for leaks or complaining about a leak adjustment, inputting notes when a customer is on a payment plan, um, which also would, uh, cause them not to be added to the disconnection list as well as a two-part verification. So it's no longer just the list is printed in the morning without going back to check to see if that person paid online, to check to see if that person, um, called and requested information, requested a hearing regarding their disconnection. So all of those things are, are addressed or will be addressed in the standard operating procedures, but also there have been some, um, modifications immediately to, to account for that as well.
Okay, uh, it's also my understanding that the director of water customer service is leaving.
He's a division manager and that's correct.
Okay, and, uh, so with the idea that we're going to get someone new, uh, my preference would be that, uh, the new person that takes over that position uh, understands that we as a council, every day, I, I know I do, hear, uh, negative customer service experiences with water customer service. And I would hope that the new person in charge of the division comes into that job with an emphasis on delivering better customer service. And in particular, when you do have people on the phones, I get their water, maybe they're having problems or their water's being turned off and probably the person calling in maybe isn't too happy. Uh, so I, I, I get that it's probably not, uh, fun phone conversations all the time. But I hear complaints about attitudes of people over the phone with water customer service quite frequently. And I would just ask that, you know, we try to make an effort to improve that so that we can go back to our constituents and say, yes, we heard those complaints. Uh, uh, and yes, that is something that the city is trying to implement. And maybe this is good timing with the person in charge of that department, uh, uh, changing. Um, uh, lastly, um, I would ask, as I mentioned earlier, that in the future, as part of either our SOPs or, or, or whatever, that water not be disconnected without two signatures. Uh, so the person that prepares the list and then it gets reviewed by the manager of customer service or whatever it may be. Uh, I was told back in the day that Kyle Hayes used to get a list every day of everyone's water that was going to be turned off and that that list sometimes was shared, uh, with other members of council to the wards so that they could see if they knew names, maybe a call could be made or, uh, you, you know, someone is either inadvertent or maybe someone was going through a tough time and the council member was aware of it. I'm not trying to put that on the backs of my fellow council members, but, uh, I would personally like, uh, uh, to see a list of, uh, disconnects, uh, for Ward One uh, when they're going to happen, uh, because maybe there would be an opportunity for me to try to, uh, reach out to those individuals and see if, you know, other arrangements could be made so that, uh, water isn't disconnected, especially people that, you know, are kids or, or, uh, or have kids or, or the elderly. So just some things there that I would like to see, uh, in the future with our water customer service, uh, implement, uh, policies that improve the customer experience so that, uh, hopefully our complaints go down and, uh, individuals have a better, um, uh, viewpoint of, uh, what's going on at City Hall and that we put more emphasis on customer service. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman?
Um, one thing that I'd like to add as well, when I got on council, it was a big deal that I had to physically come down here, um, to pay a bill if it got disconnected or something to this effect. And I had a couple, they were elderly and the son was paying the bill and maybe it got disconnected. And there's a thing where you have to physically come here. We, I, I don't know if we ever looked into that, but that is still an issue. And I would like to see some online processes where people don't have to physically come here to do that because that can be a little, it's happened to me.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman, uh, Durya?
Uh, Mr. Manager, I want to ask you again, bring this up. Now you said our water fund is healthy.
Yes.
And, and, and the reason I'm asking this, because this seems like something that needs to be done right now and not wait until the next, the next budget. And do make, I mean, I've been told that we're making adjustments to the budget all the time. I just don't think that this is something that we need to wait on.
Well, and, and our IT personnel here, it's, it would probably take some time to be able to identify.
So we would need to do, and it would, it'd have to be RFP, RFQ or something of that nature and we obviously need to go out for bid, uh.
So it takes a while to go through the process anyway. So it could, it could be six months before you'd be ready to pay for it anyway, possibly.
Well, I, I agree. Let, let's, if it's going to take six months, let's go on and get it started. Because, uh, thi- this is, uh, spending that may be, y- y- you know, uh, uh, difficult for us, but i- it's well worth it, especially if it delivers, uh, a better customer service experience for, for the constituents.
Okay, can Jamie come forward and speak to the timeline?
So on the timeline, it's going to take, once we finally agree and sign off on a contract, it's going to take a minimum of eighteen months to get the whole thing done. Um, probably that's just if we just have got our customer service, uh, billing, utility billing. If we do the entire project, it's closer to three years, so.
We could get it moving, start it now, but I, I was just saying it takes time to implement such projects.
Absolutely, and we can stage it so that the water customer service utility billing is on the front end so it gets done before some of the other HR projects or purchasing or something like that. But, you know, um, it's going to be a minimum of eighteen months for the water customer service.
It has to be paid at the beginning?
So we pay it in stages, so the way they'll bill us. So the way they'll bill us is they will give us an upfront cost that we'll have to pay. And then we will have to follow up with, you know, once they complete this stage, then we'll pay more and then.
So the city prohibited for making advanced payments. So we only pay for services rendered. So typically, implementation projects are based on an upfront cost for them to build out the software and then in stages, as Jamie mentioned, in stages based on.
That 1.8 would be spread out over the three years.
Okay. And since we're going to do water first, we could make that payment, the first payment out of the enterprise fund?
That's finance, but potentially, yes. Yes.
Correct.
And why don't we just get that RFQ process started if that's the beginning?
Okay. Can we, can we look at and come back with you on a report next council meeting with the possible timeline on how this could be done? So we can look at it and make sure it's not conflicting with some other projects or whatever that's out there.
Okay. And one other question, don't we, haven't we implemented? I'm through with that. Haven't we implemented customer service training for our?
Yes, we do. We do annual and quarterly customer service training in-house with our HR team. Every, every city employee has to complete the training. So when they're hired on, they complete the training. And departments and divisions that deal directly with the public are required to continue customer service training on an annual basis.
And that was implemented when I got here. I agree. It was, customer service was one of the top three things. Lack of customer services identified, so much so that it was included in the strategic plan, improving customer service. So we have mandatory customer service. We have ways to go still, long ways to go. But there, matter of fact, there is a mandatory customer service training coming up in a few weeks.
December.
December for city employees. So it's, it's an issue that, and we're addressing it and we'll continue to address it until we get it right.
Councilman Turner, thank you, Councilman Durya.
Yes, and one of the things that was discussed earlier, I don't think we touched on today, and I don't know if it's possible, but the billing cycles, is it possible for it to be maybe first through the fifth? Or does it have to be whenever they turn their water on?
I guess I don't understand, see your question. But yeah, the billing, the city billing cycles are pretty consistent. Like there's, I think, 10 billing cycles. And so everybody, not everybody in the city is built on the same cycle. And that's just because there's, you know, limited people trying to input those billings. So it's a continual basis. So it is like what billing cycle you go into is based on a couple of different factors. A, where do you live? And B, when did you sign up for, for service?
I think one of the things that council would probably like to hear, and it may require a little bit of study, is what would it cost to be able to get to a more tight billing schedule for the entire city? Now, I realize feasibility could be a problem with that, but at least knowing.
Need to reduce the number of billing cycles?
Yes, and that there's a more common time, you know, that things are due between everybody's due dates, the first through the fifth. So if you're going to be.
So the simplest answer to that is money.
But again, how much money and what it would take to be able to do that?
You would essentially need more people billing. So obviously, the software, any software update may assist. The meter reading software could assist with the efficiency of that. But you also need someone who's reviewing the bills to make sure that they're correct and then processing those bills out, right? So you're talking about adding, not necessarily like just increased technology, but you're also talking about adding personnel.
And I don't disagree with you. My only point is that we've brought this up several times. And if this is something important to the council, you know, we can certainly look at doing it, but we just, in terms of what that cost would be and whether it's, whether it's worth it. But, you know, I also think with the software, I realize it's not going to be a quick process because, you know, I would think the significance of upgraded software, I mean, I just look at my business and our software's changed exponentially in the last four years. So I can't imagine how much it can change how things work currently. I know my staff, we close a lot more loans with a lot less people. So just because of the technology and because more things done. So I do believe the technology will help us, but I also realize that the city, everything's a little bit different. So just getting more clarity on that because it's something that keeps, we seem to keep getting to in terms of billing cycles. Councilman Turner, do you have another question?
No, that was just my main concern, just making sure we understood what we meant by a consistent billing cycle. Because I met with a property management company the other day and they were paying multiple bills almost every other day. And I get it, but anything we could do to make our service in our city more efficient, that's what I just support. So thank you.
I also like to mention, Mayor, although this audit didn't look into it, it's our automated meter reading system. At some point, you're going to have to put money into that system. It's an Itron automated system, they require high maintenance. And you should continue to put dollars and replace so many of those meters per year. And I'm not sure that's happening here in Beaumont. So we, we will look at what that means because part of putting those systems in means you have few people that physically have to go out and read meters. As that system deteriorates, you need more people out there. Or either, either the efficiency deteriorates, productivity deteriorates, and you have mistakes in meters being read. So we will need to look at that system too and see what it means and see how we can add to it and add some of those components, maybe. That council consider adding that says, I can sit here and read my meter from home or tell if it's got a leak or, or what's the consumption doing, things like that. So we'll, we'll take a quick glance at that too and provide y'all with some numbers.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no other questions or discussion on.
So just before we close, I definitely want to thank myself, specifically Robin Shaw, who did the most of the legwork for the audit, as well as Mike Harris's group for their participation and HR as well for their assist in this. The abbreviated presentation that you saw today, that we actually did look at several other components for improved efficiency. But what we looked at specifically was just to present to council was operational procedures, since that was the primary core of the concern. Specifically, Councilman Crenshaw is concerned about disconnection notices and how do those mistakes happen. But we did do a comprehensive audit of the entire department, some of which contains sensitive information that isn't appropriate to discuss publicly. So I'm happy to meet with council individually to address those concerns. We did look at the Itron system and the dollars needed for that. Like I said, council does approve an annual maintenance contract for those. But it's determined that there may be, need additional dollars to remain consistent and competitive to investment. As a manager mentioned, the package that the city has was not the most extensive package. And so if council is interested in that, it'll, it'll cost more dollars. So to answer the mayor's questions, like what, can we do more yet? It's just how much money do you want to spend?
Right, and getting that number. Yeah. All right. So we're going to move on to the next work session.
Counsel, to review and discuss the health department inspection fees.
This item was requested by Councilman Crenshaw and Councilman Hilliard. And so we will yield to them to answer any questions they have.
So do y'all, in term, we're talking about review and discuss health department inspection fees? Y'all requested a work session?
Yes. Well, can we have the health director come up?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. My concern was that I had several local restaurants reach out to me that indicated that they received a letter from your department stating that city council raised their fees. So number one, I'm always happy to defend when I do something that increases someone's bill. But if I recall correctly, your department came before us and asked us to change rates to be more in line with the state. I said that sounded fine and I think it was unanimous. I did not intend for us to leave here and someone from your department to communicate to every restaurant in town that I increased their fees. I, I just think that that was not a great way to do that. I think that your letter or your email from your department should have said something to the effect of the city made the decision to increase the fees. So with that said, and, you know, and I'm not necessarily upset with you about it, but, you know, just whoever in your department did that, I would hope in the future, we're a little bit more sensitive to the fact that we have a job here to do and if this.
And I just want to interrupt you because the city did not do it. The city council did. And for transparency's sake, we're, we are the ones that make that decision. We could have chose not to change the fees. So it was a council decision to increase the fees. So the information's correct because the, that depart, the departments don't have the authority to raise those fees without our permission. Is that correct? So, I mean, in terms of full transparency, now, I'm not saying in terms of including communications in the future when there's rate increases for how we might be able to relay that to our customers and how customer service is, is important. But in terms of it being transparent, whether it's the city or the city council, whenever there's an increase in taxes and any fees, it's coming from this elected body.
Okay. So then, you know, we can, I'll correct the next time a restaurant asks me about the fee. I'll say it was something brought to us by the city. This was not something initiated by the council and the mayor was all for raising your fees.
Well, technically, I think all seven voted. So if you're in a.
I'm not. So I now want to go back on the record, I did not want to raise fees. It was not my intention to raise fees for all of our restaurant providers.
And that's fine. And council member comments, that'd be fine, but you did vote to do it.
Okay, well, and now, and now that I've been corrected on that, I want to make it clear, and that was the purpose of the workshop, that I would like to rescind that portion of the ordinance. And I do not believe that we should be raising fees from $250 a year to $400 a year for all restaurants across the city. If maybe there's a new restaurant that wants to accept the new fee structure, maybe that's something that could happen. But I think for us, just to come up with this significant increase in annual fees for our small business owners, a lot of these restaurants are, you know, a couple of employees and restaurants are constantly failing across our city. It's tough times out there for our restaurant owners. And I just think that this was an extremely poorly executed situation. And that's with the fees. Number two, Taste of Triangle. The rest, the State Restaurant Association, who is interpreting the new laws that just went into effect regarding state license fees and health inspections done by both the state and the cities, has made changes. I get that. And so we're trying to figure out what's going to happen with Taste of Triangle. I would like to encourage your department to come up with a solution that Taste of Triangle can happen without every participant in Taste of Triangle having to pay their own separate fees. It seems like last year, we had a problem with kids coming from one of the schools in Port Arthur. I think from Lamar, Port Arthur culinary class came over and they were going to have a booth. And the city health department had a bunch of red tape because they were not from Beaumont and they were coming from Port Arthur and they weren't allowed to participate. And then maybe council got involved and that, that was changed. But it seems like every year, the health department comes up with new rules and new policy changes to make Taste of Triangle more difficult and more red tape. And I would just ask that that is an event that brings the entire community together. It is extremely well attended. It sells out. It's very popular. And I just am concerned that already, before this event, I think it's in February, already they're getting guidance from the city health department that contradicts what the lawyers for the State Restaurant Association are saying as they interpret the new state rules. And it's very problematic and it's creating frustration for our restaurant owners and those that participate in Taste of Triangle. And I would hope that the city would do a little bit better job in trying to make Taste of Triangle a success and not be overly burdened and difficult with fees and regulations.
And Mr. Coleman, have you heard of what the State Restaurant Association attorneys, how they, if they're interpreting it different than the city? Have you gotten any of that information?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But if, if I may.
Sure.
Councilman Crenshaw, we have to follow the Texas food establishment rules and the FDA food code. And so we follow those rules to the letter. We don't have a choice. So last year, before Senate Bill 1008 was passed, if you was a restaurant or vendor operating outside of the city of Beaumont, and when you came into the city of Beaumont, just by the rules, now you had to get a permit with us within this city. So you had to apply for a temporary permit. Okay? So now with the Taste of Triangle, we, we are, you know, we are business friendly. Okay, but we have to abide by the rules. We've never stopped the Taste of Triangle from operating. Last year, we had what we call a special event permit, where the Taste of the Triangle organizers would come and apply for one permit and everybody fell underneath that one permit, they still had to be inspected. With the passage of Senate Bill 1008, we no longer can issue a special event permit.
Is that, is that the interpretation of the State Restaurant Association?
We actually have, I have the email from the state right here.
Okay. And they say that you cannot have a special event permit?
Cannot. We cannot, with the passage of Senate Bill 1008, no local jurisdiction in Texas can issue a permit that the state doesn't issue. So we have to be in accordance with the state. We can't issue a permit and we can't charge fees above what the state charges. So our fees have to be aligned with the state or they can be lower than the state.
Okay, so you've seen these emails then between the Texas Restaurant Association and the city?
We actually sent.
And you don't agree with me that there seems to be a conflict of opinion?
Well, we have to follow the state.
Well.
We, we sent her email to the state, to the, to the Food Establishment Department of the state of Texas. We sent her email to them to give us the right interpretation. And they do not have one permit because basically what she was requesting is really lines up with another special event permit. Where one person applies for the permit, then everybody operates under that permit. That's the wrong interpretation of the new Senate bill. Now, what could happen if, for example, you was the owner and responsibility of multiple food booths at one event, then you would have to only apply for one permit. But in this case, you got different vendors coming in to participate in the Taste of the Triangle.
Okay, so what, what's, what's your latest position? The Taste of Triangle can't, can't happen under current law?
Yeah, it's just that each food vendor that participates in the Taste of Triangle have to apply for a temporary food permit.
Okay. And what's the fee for the temporary food?
$52.
Okay. And in the past, what was the overall fee that had to be paid for Taste of Triangle?
$220.
One $220 fee?
Right, because they fell under the special event permit.
Okay. And do you just offhand recall how many participants there were last year?
Last year, I have that list. I think it was anywhere between 40 to 45.
Okay. So 40 to 45, you used to pay $250 and this.
No, 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 no. Taste of the Triangle organizers would pay the one, $220.
$220, right. So the city's going to go from a one fee of $220 to 40 to 45, assuming that's accurate and that's the same number this year, times 52?
Not the city. Texas Bill, Senate, Senate Bill 1008, we don't have a choice.
Okay. And you don't have a choice, that $52 goes to the state?
No, goes to the city.
Okay. So who set the rate of $52?
The state. Our, our temporary permits used to be, before the Senate. Our, our temporary permits used to be, before the Senate Bill passed in September, it was $30 for the first day and $15 for each additional day. And the temporary food permit is good for 14 consecutive days. With the passage of the Senate Bill, the food permit is $152 for 14 consecutive days. So which means that that's the state rate, which means that by the bill, by the new law, we can't charge more than what the state charges.
Well, and I definitely don't want to charge more.
Right.
But what's, but this money is paid to the city of Beaumont and it's kept by the city of Beaumont.
Yes.
This is not money that's sent to the state.
Correct.
So why can the city then, if this is our money, why can we not change that? And I get we can't make it more, but why can't we make it less?
Then basically, the staff will be working for free.
And I'm not saying, I've never proposed anything for free, but I do believe that, you know, that is a significant increase in cost for the event.
Let me say this, Councilman Crenshaw, we're talking about, these are the companies that participate in the Taste of Triangle. Jason's Daily, J Wilson's, 1701, Lanes, Modellos, just to name a few. Now, I don't think, me personally, I don't think J Wilson's is going to complain about $52.
And they may not, but overall, the theory was that the fees were increasing significantly for this event. And you see that going from the $220 to the, I'm terrible at math, what's $52 times 45? Is that 10,000?
23.
2300.
2300. So, you know, it's going up.
If you use 43 as the median.
Yeah. Okay.
Maybe I know money.
Yeah. So-
Not much money.
The restaurant, the local, the Sabine area restaurant association, the local association just, you know, had concerns as to, you know, why there was this sudden increase. And I get it, part of it's from, from the state, but it's not all the state. I think that the city has some wiggle room here to make an event like this. Again, that $52 is supposed to be for a 14-day event. This is a one-day event. It's actually like a three-hour event. And, you know, I get 52 here for John Wilson, maybe isn't a big deal, but for a mom and pop operation, you know, that Chuck's Sandwich Shop right over here, you know, maybe that's cost prohibitive for them to participate in Taste of Triangle. And it would be one thing if the fees were similar or related to what we have charged in the past. But, you know, now we are putting a cost that's 100 times what it was last year or whatever that is. And so anyway, it's just, these are things that I hear and I heard a lot from our restaurant owners last week. Two's company that's right here at Art Museum, that was one of the first people to call to tell me how upset they were about the increase from the $250 to the $400 for them to be inspected.
Well, we didn't increase permit fees at all. We added an inspection fee, right? Your permit fee starts in January. You pay for your permit or renewal. Your inspection may not be for another six months.
Right.
Okay. Let me, if I can share this with you, with the amount of money the department makes over a year, okay? When we look at your brick and mortar, your standalone restaurants, your temporaries and your food trucks, we make roughly about $56,857. That's how much money that department makes on permit and fees. With the new Senate Bill 1008 and what we can't inspect anymore as of September 1, we're losing $40,000. Now, when you add food trucks, which goes into effect in July of next year, that's another potential $12,300 that the city would be losing because in that House Bill 2844, the food truck freedom bill, it's going to be a statewide permit. And so it's going to be paid to the state. So when you add that $12,300 to the loss that we are really incurring, so you're looking at a total loss of $47,557.
And I, and I hear you on that, but in the grand scheme of what restaurants contribute to our city so far as sales tax revenue and employment and property taxes, 50 grand is insignificant. So, you know, I'm sure, you know, we took a hit over the 10-day grace period in not charging, you know, people the $10 late fee on time. But, you know, I would much rather make and have the city not try to nickel and dime our restaurants with things like this. And again, I think that if this is the first time something had come up with Taste of Triangle, it would be one thing. But this is every year, it seems like I get calls from people saying, can you get involved in this? The city is doing this or the city is doing that. And it seems to me to be a common theme.
Okay. Councilman Williams?
My comments, not so much geared toward the restaurants, but the special events. I'd know Taste of the Triangle is a big one. Girls Haven Gumbo Cook Office coming up. They've been impacted by this. And so I just wonder, could we take a certain approach with nonprofit events, with events that are put on by nonprofits, a lowered fee, a waived fee?
The way the new Senate Bill reads, I keep going back to that. We're not allowed to charge nonprofits. So when you talk about Girls Haven, Girls Haven itself has not been charged anything.
But the individual-
But the individual vendors, because they're not nonprofit.
But we couldn't look at that and say, this is a nonprofit event and write something in a certain way to-
That's above my purgatory.
Council approves fees in your, in your master fee schedule. And so the approval of fees are just straight across the board in your master fee schedule. So what you're asking to do is to have selective enforcement?
So that's why I'm asking.
Let me finish. What you're asking to do is to have selective enforcement. And when you have objectivity or subjectivity, excuse me, in your ordinances, you do open yourself up to something because you'd have to put enough qualifiers in there to make sure that A, someone who was being excluded didn't meet the criteria in order to protect for enforcement, also to protect employees and people that. One thing council can consider is having tiered fees. Obviously, the state law prohibits you from having fees in excess of theirs, but you could implement a tiered fee schedule for events lasting longer than a certain amount of days. They would be at the max schedule for events lasting less than that, they could be at a different schedule. So there are some avenues in there to where you don't have to apply subjectivity or interpretation from an employee where you could just be, if you meet these criteria, you're here. If you meet these criteria, you're here. So for a longer multi-day event like the Southeast Texas Fair, maybe you do have a higher permit fee at $52 for a smaller, short-term event like the Taste of the Triangle where it's just for a day, one-day event, maybe you have a lower fee event. That would be a more reasonable option, in my opinion.
Thank you. Councilwoman, thank you, Councilman.
I think I missed it, but when did the fee change to $52?
That fee is implemented-
September 1.
With the passage of the bill for September 1 won't go into effect until January?
No.
Oh, that was a minute.
No, that's already in effect.
It started September-
September 1. Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Hilliard? You're Mike.
So on, to follow up with what Mike said, I have received from the people that are putting on the Girls Haven, that they were told by the city that they won't even receive their permit till the day of the, of the event. And then they were also told that they didn't need one because it's on public property. So they're, they're very confused and, and, you know, are worried that they won't get their permit till the actual day of the, the deal. Can you give some indication?
The way, the way it works with a temporary permit is that you apply for the temporary permit and then you're required to have all the sanitation requirements that's needed. And so once, when the inspector get out there the day of your event and once you meet all the requirements, then you're issued the permit. See, I'm not going to issue the permit prior to because you might not necessarily meet all the sanitation requirements. So that's why they get their permit the day of.
Okay. Councilman Turner?
Just, just for clarity with everybody, one thing that's been beneficial to me is getting everybody in the room. And once you get everybody in the room, have an approach that we not leaving out till we solve the problem. And we got to get back to that, you know, because doing it in a way where both sides feel a certain way, I don't think we get anywhere. So I would recommend, if possible, if a group or if an organization, I can say, me and Councilmember Mike gets, met with members of Taste of the Triangle last year and some concessions was made from the city of Beaumont in order to the event, but we met and we sat down and we discussed it and we came out with a form of a solution and the event actually happened. So my thing is just, can we just meet with both parties and see if we could come to some form of a solution? If we can't, then we address it. But I'd just like to see us have a more approach to where we're actually working together.
I agree with that, but, but, but if I may, we have to follow, again, the Texas food establishment rules, which is governed by the state of Texas and the FDA food code. So a lot of times when vendors have issues with the rules, they always say the city of Beaumont is coming up with new rules. We're just enforcing the rules that we have to abide by.
Right.
And just one more follow-up. Other cities, surrounding cities, we don't have to get into the names, but cities that are very close to Beaumont, some cities don't even have a health inspection that actually even goes out to the restaurant, right? So you have cities within a five to 10-mile radius that depends on the county to go out and do inspections versus us being a larger city, which is a hub. We actually have our own department. So we have surrounding cities that depend on the county to do inspections that are the health and food of what their citizens eat every day, correct?
Correct.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. So with that, it sounds like whether we want to review sta, creating a staggered permit fee for temporary and look at what that cost would be as suggested?
Well, man, I'm in favor of, I know two council members brought it up. I'm in favor of any solution that we can all work together to us to kind of reach the common goal, so.
I would propose rescinding the $150 inspection fee and just doing away with that. And then we keep the $52 two-week fee mandated by the state, but then we have a single, one-day temporary permit fee of, say, $5 or-
Yes, Mr. Coleman?
Just to, based on what Councilman Crenshaw is proposing, just guys, keep this in mind. If we rescind that $150 fee, that has to be across the board. Now, how that's going to work, because schools have, they're required to have an inspection to meet their food program by the federal government. So I just, you know, and when they cares call us, then we can charge an inspection fee if they call because they're required by the law to have some inspections as well. So I just want you guys to keep that in mind when you're talking about rescinding the $150 inspection fee, you just got to keep that in mind.
But this fee didn't exist before. Because you just sent the letter to all restaurants saying, city council just created a new $150 fee. So what are we losing if we didn't have it before?
We're not required by the state anymore to inspect 501(c) status as well as organization that's governed by the state, daycares and all that. But the schools, by their food, by their feeding program, by the federal government, they are required to have an inspection. Now, we no longer can inspect them for a permit, but if you rescind that $150, we still have to go inspect them, then we're, the city is not gaining anything from the schools at all.
I think I now understand what you're saying. So would it be appropriate then, if you have a food permit and you're already paying the $250, you don't have to pay the $150 inspection fee? But if you don't have a food permit and you have to be inspected for the USDA or whatever, you do have to pay that $150 fee?
That's, that's not my decision.
Well, I get that, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to satisfy your concern with also not making the people that are already, have been for the past several years paying $250 a year, not to make them now have to pay 400.
And we didn't raise the permit fees because when you, we look at the number of chairs or stools at a restaurant, that's how we count or determine the cost of the permit fee. The state of Texas look at revenue, okay? So for the state of Texas, for a permit, for a restaurant that makes in excess $150,000 per year, they permit fee is $773, right? And so in my mind, I'm thinking of the papadoos and the cheddars and so forth and so on. They permit fee is $350 in Beaumont. So we didn't raise a permit fee.
Okay. Here's your email or your department's email. The new fee structure includes an additional-
Inspection fee.
Yes. Okay. That's what I'm talking about. I don't care what you're doing with papadoos, okay? My concern is Two and Company over here at the Art Museum, which is a very small mom and pop operation and Chuck's Sandwich Shop. We went from $250 a year to 400 a year. You would agree with me, right? And that's what your email says, an additional fee of 150.
Per inspection, not the permit. But if you adding the inspection fee and a permit fee?
Yes. So would it be, would it be okay with your guidelines of what you're trying to achieve if we say that if you have an existing food permit, that you do not have to pay the $150 inspection fee? That would still allow you to charge the inspection fee to schools that don't have a food permit?
That's not my decision. That's up to council.
But for clarity, we weren't char, we weren't charging them inspection fees in the past. We were just charging them the $250. So the new, 150 is new for them. So if that was something that we did want to do by, action by council in terms of if somebody has a permit, I mean, it does affect our revenue, which we certainly need to be mindful of, but that would be something that we could look at.
Yeah, that's up to council.
Yeah. Yeah.
Please, okay. So, and while I understand local business, I'm a small local business owner, I guess maybe this is not to you, maybe it's to you, what the ultimate objective of increasing these fees, inspection fees, have you, permit fees, whatever, was to generate some revenue, right? Or was it, what was the purpose of this?
So the implementation is, is that if we're now required to inspect certain businesses, is that the, the city can't basically give away services? We have to charge for your services. So if it's, if it's the, and staff made the recommendation to just charge what the state was charging to maintain consistency. So if it's the 150, that's the chief concern for council, council has several options. Council can say, we want to increase permit fees by X amount of dollars to include the cost of inspections. We don't want that fee to exceed X amount of dollars. Calculate what, what that looks like in order to maintain efficient operations, but also provide increased services to citizens. One of the things that Councilman Crenshaw said is that anyone who's paying for a permit, their permit cost should also include the cost of inspection, which may require an additional increase to the, to the permit fee. But that's something to be discovered to make sure that that, the, the cost of inspection is actually covered in the permit fee. And then anyone who doesn't, is not required to have a permit be, be charged X amount of dollars, whether it's 150, 75, whatever, to cover the cost of inspection. So obviously, those are all options that are available to council to address the concern that the city cannot provide a service at zero cost.
I get that. And that's, I guess, what brings me to my next point, which is we want to be conservative and- which is, we want to be conservative in certain areas, and other areas, we want to throw everything by the wayside. We got to get one way and stick with it. Are we worried about creating places to create money to pay for services? Or we just worried about giving things away for free? But either way, we can't be conservative sometimes and run it up other times. I don't know, but we need to kind of get one way and stick with it. Are we going to, whatever, whatever we come up with, effective September 1, which I guess some of us were just newly elected, but we need to make sure that we get down to the bottom of what the fees are going to include, so that.
So I think the concern for council, and what I hear Councilman Crenshaw saying, is that there needs to be some consideration for businesses or what they're already paying, and we need to not try to outtax our small businesses, which is understood. So if it's the desire of council for there to be, again, a tiered system in the permitting fee process, where, again, if someone who already has a permit fee and is required to have a permit fee, then we factor in how much it costs for them to also have an inspection, keeping in mind that that fee should not exceed $150. That's doable. So we would just need to determine what that looks like in order for an effective inspection to be done and it not impede help.
And I think what could be helpful in the future, because clearly what I'm hearing is, if people aren't clear when we're doing an increase, what that's going to mean to the businesses or individuals, you know, we just, we need to clarify that in, before we, you know, pass ordinances, just so that we're mindful of, all right, well, this will, you know, increase, whether it's restaurants or whether it's water rates, how, the average it will affect the people that it's affecting in terms of cost. Yes, Councilman Turner, then Councilman Durio, then I'll go to City Manager, unless you need to add something beforehand, City Manager?
I can wait on them.
Yeah, yeah, man, I think, I think as a, maybe as a council, we kind of do some form of a workshop as far as, you know, what we want to accomplish financially, because one of my fears is, I know we have did things. We've got rid of certain fees and permits, and we recommended things like bus rides. And if we're not careful, we're increasing salaries as well. I just want to make sure we're on the same page on.
How we're going to afford it.
How we can afford it, yeah. And I don't mind doing anything to help others, but I just want us to be mindful. We are pulling away revenue, but we are increasing expenditures when we do raises and things of that magnitude.
Thank you, Councilman Durio, and then?
Mr. Coleman, you said you're losing $47 to $50-something thousand a year? What was that money being used for? What, is it going straight to your budget?
General fund.
General fund.
So did y'all come up with a way to replace it?
They were just responding to the state law that was passed, that went into effect.
Well, I was just asking that because you saw already lose money, and then now they want to, you know, some of us want to lower your fees or eliminate the fees. That's going to cost you even more out of the general fund.
Thank you.
It's because we have a healthy general fund, right?
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor, most of the cities of Texas are probably discussing it. They've heard, they're at council meeting today. I got a call from the City Manager, Victoria, Texas, and they have it on their agenda today. They're talking about inspection fees due to the House Bill 1008. So everybody's trying to work through this and come up with a good solution for their individual city. So it's probably going to take more thought, a little more thought, and we could come up with something that works for everybody in that discussion. So I kind of recommend we take some of the feedback we've gotten from you and then come back and with a further discussion on this item in the future. Because, again, everybody's wrestling with it. It's the same thing with the housing tax credits. The state tosses these things on cities, and then cities have to wrestle with them and try to figure it out. So it's going to take some thought to where we can get to work, Councilmember Crenshaw wants, but also maybe work with Mr. Coleman.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Coleman. I believe that concludes this work session, so we're going to move into Councilmember Comments, and we will start. Councilman Crenshaw?
I think I've said enough today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman?
No comment.
Councilman Williams?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the City Manager and Mike Harris, the Water Sewer Department head. There was an issue with a water leak Sunday, and they both responded promptly to it and addressed it the best we could. So, you know, we're only as good as the people that are in the positions that run the city. So thank you for your response, and sorry that I bugged you on a Sunday afternoon.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Turner?
Yeah, just I got a few people, West End, North End, they calling about quiet zones. So I just, if we can see where we at, they still calling. One guy literally put on speaker and wanted me to hear, and I'm like, all right, I get it. But just heads up, that's something, you know, we dealing with, that's a phone call. And, man, I don't know if we got to do a video or what, but I'm still getting text messages about this light at 11th Street over there by Bruce Oars Barbecue, and I think it's Washington? Man, Ms. Molly, I know you didn't explain it a million times, but please, if we can get some type of thing where we can get it out there, because almost, I was in HEB the other day, and somebody held me up for 30 minutes talking about it. And I don't mind talking about it, but I keep telling them, I even pointed them to your last councilman because I got it in my notes when you explained it. But if we can get a video, maybe partner with Tracy and get it on the city's page, I think it'd be greatly appreciated. And I think the audit was good. You know, sometimes it's hard to take constructive criticism. You know, just coming from the business sector, when you're dealing with people, you got to be a big boy when you're in politics and when you're working in customer service. You got to be able to take constructive criticism. So I think it's good that we can have dialogue and work together and move on. You know, I want them people, I can have a disagreement with somebody, and the next day I'm back good, I'm ready to go. Yeah, my wife laughing at me all the time. She really ready to be mad for a few days. I'm ready to hug you right after we finish arguing. So I just want to encourage people to stay positive, try to work together, and let's get some solutions, man. Let's get some wins.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Hilliard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to remember that. I'm going to reach over and get a hug next time you're. So I just have a few things. We've got some concern from citizens on RFD Road that runs adjacent to 105 and possibly some kind of traffic control system there, a light. I know that we were planning on punching a road through to 105, so I know we had to have done some kind of light or traffic study at that time. But it's becoming a dangerous situation, and I would rather us be proactive than reactive when it comes to that. Also, I'm receiving lots of speeding concerns for the circuits and that area. And, you know, I received an email from the police department, and they're trying to do their best, along with the other 500 locations that they need to do. I don't know if maybe we can do something more about that, maybe, you know, set some kind of assignment up where, instead of two traffic officers work in one location, separate them, you know, I don't know. But I'm really getting a lot of concerns about the speeding and the racing and the things. And so I don't want us, as a council, to have to give condolences to a family because we dropped the ball on something happening in one of these neighborhoods to one of the kids that, we have two schools that meet up to that neighborhood. Also, I want to ask about the City Manager. Are we still on track for the cadet program at LIT for January?
Yes.
Perfect. Now, when will the testing be administered?
I can't say exactly when the testing will be administered, but we had a meeting with LIT on yesterday, with Dr. Valentine and his person that's over the academy. So along with the fire chief and his deputies. So we are definitely on.
Awesome. I'm excited. Thank you.
And things are looking great, based, and they've really been cooperative in meeting our needs and getting, because we have the 25-plus vacancies, and they're working with us to get all those vacancies filled in the academy for this, starting January the 12th, starting January the 12th.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for that. And are we going to, as a city, are we going to pull out all the stops promoting this to let the citizens know that this will be available for our, our people here?
Yeah, we, yes.
Okay, awesome. And, you know, I want to thank Mike and the City Manager for the same thing Sunday. We, I mean, it's still, but for y'all to do what you did and to come through and get it fixed, big kudos. And so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Durio?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman Turner, South End, they want quiet zones also. Make the top of the list, right, Molly? And also, like I said earlier about the agenda, there was quite a few projects that were completed today, and that's always a good thing. And also, the mayor's Veterans Coalition met today. I could be, I got there right at the end, but it was very successful, from what I understand. Thank you, Joey, for handling that, and a lot was accomplished. So we're moving forward with that, getting ready for the next meeting. And let me look at my notes. I think that's it, though.
All right. Sure, because.
That's it?
All right. Madam City Attorney?
I guess I want to point out that, even though department audits isn't a general function of my office, I want to commit my office on the job that they did. It definitely was a large undertaking, and the focus was on ways that we can be better for our citizens and for our customers. So happy to have assisted in that. And then also want to shout out my daddy for sitting through council with y'all today. So shout out to my daddy, the best daddy.
Public Works, please. We're also applauding you because we know she had to have been a handful of raisins, so. That's a part of my comment. Works?
Yes, in reference to the West End Quiet Zone, the pre-construction meeting with the contractor and Union Pacific Railroad is scheduled for later this week. So we'll have a schedule from them. There's a very, very complicated level of coordination that is about to take place. But this project is continuing to move forward with the pre-construction meeting. So glad to mention that. That signal on Washington and 11th Street, that preemption, that is not something the city wanted to have to install. That was a federal railroad requirement. We will put together something to help explain how that signal works. But yes, it is immensely frustrating. We definitely commiserate with the citizens. We have kicked off the concrete repairs on Fieland Boulevard. So you will notice intermittent lane closures as we work through this to improve the riding conditions on Fieland Boulevard. And on RFD Road, there is an ongoing study of Highway 105 that is with the engineer, and so they are continuing that study, but it's still going to be a few months. But council, if you'll recall, that y'all approved the consultant, for the city to engage with the consultant for that study, and that is ongoing. Thank you.
City Manager, Ben?
No comment.
City Manager, Alice, okay? Yes? CFO?
Real quick, I wanted to thank Jess Prince for the workshop today on the Lytech credits, the low-income housing. She's already underway with updating the policy on the feedback that she received by council. So thank you, guys, in participating on that.
That's awesome. Yes, thank you. Okay, and Mr. City Manager?
Just a reminder, there's a Service Awards Breakfast tomorrow morning at 7:30 at the Civic Center.
I have one more note written down that I forgot about.
Durio?
So on Election Day, I went out to John's Library, and there was a line wrapped around the library, but the parking lot was dark, didn't have any lights on. But I just wanted to thank facilities, Mr. Raggett, and the manager called them, and they went out there that night. And I guess it's probably had something to do with the time changing, but they got them all cut on that night while they were out there voting.
Right.
Appreciate that.
All right. I think it was a productive meeting, and I certainly thank everybody for staying through the meeting. And now we're going to recess into executive session.